Well, we have no one to do.
There we go.
If you want to start the meeting?
I'm ready.
Yes, good.
Okay, I can see. So, are you ready?
Yes.
Okay, alright. Hello, we're the 17th, 2025 Planning Commission Meeting at 7:02 PM. I'm Ron Kutsch and I will be your Chair this evening. First order of business is approval of minutes of September 15. Has everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Yes. I'll entertain the motion to approve the minutes as presented or with corrections.
I'm taking a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Sorry. Any discussion? Or may I say, aye?
Aye.
I propose. Okay, motion carries. In hand and sleeve, that will take us to our public hearing. I have a few things to read, so settle in. I now open a public hearing on case file number 627-25-000013-POMT. Request for vacation of the unimproved portion of Montana Street, laying between block 10 and block 22 of the bank addition to North Bend. The applicant in this manner has been involved. The owners of the subject property is PRM Investments LLC. These recordings will be recorded. These proceedings will be reported. Any issue which may be the basis for an appeal to the Land Board use of appeals shall be raised not later than the close of the record or at or following the final evidentiary hearing before this commission. Such issues shall be raised and accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford this body and other parties an adequate opportunity to respond to each issue. Persons wishing to address the Planning Commission shall be limited to a period of three minutes per person with preference being given to North Bend residents and non-resident business and property owners. If any group of three or more persons sharing a common viewpoint on a subject wishes to address the Planning Commission, during the time for comment, the group may select a spokesperson who shall represent the views of the group to the question. Written testimony in the form of petitions letters that center may be printed, presented to the Planning Commission for consideration. The applicant will be allowed time to make the presentation. All other persons speaking in favor or against the application shall have three minutes. The applicant will then have five minutes for rebuttal testimony. B, conflicts of interest, ex parte communications, contacts and bias. The Commission is required to disclose any conflicts of interest and ex parte contacts that have we have with proposed, excuse me, proposal or applicant damages, whether we have any financial or other personal interest in the proposal and whether we have spoken with anybody about the proposal outside of the hearing. Also, commissioners may also participate if they can do so without any bias either for or against the application. If any commissioners wish to make disclosures. Very good. But there are any challenges from the audience as to conflicts, the ventures, ex parte contacts, or bias related to any member of the Commission. Very done. C, required statements. Statements require me to tell you a number of things at the beginning of the hearing. First, the applicable substantive criteria that apply to this application are contained in the written staff report and will be identified and disclosed in the oral staff report. ORS 197.7975A. Second, your testimony, arguments and evidence must be directed toward these criteria or the criteria in the comprehensive plan or development code that you would apply to this application. ORS 197.7975B. Third, failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision maker or other people an opportunity to respond may preclude the appeal of the decision on this application based on that issue. ORS 197.7975C. Finally, to the applicant, failure to raise constitutional or other issues relating to proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the city to respond to the issues precludes an action for damages in certain court. ORS 197.7963B. Appeals from Planning Commission are heard by City Council in the CC 1829020. We will now hear from the staff. They go over the report. You're on.
Good evening, everyone. So my name is Pallad Pandey. I'm the City Planner.
Have a work in here, you have your microphone on.
Yes, it is. My name is Pallad Pandey, City Planner of the City of North Bend. Tonight, I'll be presenting case number 6272500013-PL10G. A request for a right-of-way vacation for a portion of Montana Street between Oak and Pine Street. Giving you a background, the applicant in Prerna, representing PRM Investments LLC, submitted a petition to vacate the portion of the unimproved right-of-way on Montana Street. This segment lies within the residential R7 zone and is approximately 80 feet wide. The western portion is partially improved and currently provides driveway and garage access for the properties at 1686 and 1700 Oak Street. The eastern portion remains unimproved, vegetated, and adjoins two vacant parcels, 2555 and 2588 Montana Street. Surrounding properties are primary the residential or undeveloped. Talking about the existing utilities, the right-of-way includes active sanitary sewer and storm drainage mains with manhole located mainly along the western section. These utilities must remain accessible for maintenance and repair. In addition, as noted by the Public Works Director, preserving a continuous corridor is important for the utility access and emergency vertical circulation. There were few petition requirements under ORS 271.080. The applicant is required to secure 100% consent, written consent from the immediate adjacent property owners and two-thirds consent from affected property owners within 400 feet. Out of 36 affected properties, 24 signatures were required and all 24 were obtained, meeting the consent requirement. Staff analysis, while staff finds the application meets the consent requirements, a full vacation of Montana Street right-of-way is not appropriate due to the presence of sanitary sewer lines, existing partial street improvements, and the need to maintain future access connections. Vacating the entire 80-foot wide width would block the existing sanitary corridor and eliminate a potential east-west connection, which conflicts with the city's street network standard. According to the city's transportation system plan, a minimum 48-foot wide right-of-way must be maintained for a local street. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the partial vacation only, allowing up to 16 feet to be vacated from each side, leaving a 48-foot wide corridor along the center line. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, now I hear from the primary applicant, or their representative, who has 15 minutes to present.
I have a question. Just, uh, does the applicant own any of the property adjacent to the vacation area?
Sorry?
Does the applicant own any of the property adjacent to the proposed?
Yes.
So they're trying to get more access.
Yeah.
Wouldn't the second question is, when you do a vacation, it's split down the middle of the street? And so they would get, so each property owner on each side of the street would get half of it or leave?
But then, we are approving only partial vacation, so they would get only 16 feet from their property line. So they need to maintain 48 foot from center line for the proposed corridor.
So then the opposite side of the street would gain the other 16 feet?
They can, if they apply again, they can also.
Or they have to, is the other person on this other side of the street have to apply?
Yeah.
Oh, or who would own, so who would own that?
He owns it.
Oh, you would.
No, not me.
No.
I'm down the street farther. I do have a question on that, though, kind of in the same round that you're going.
So, but the applicant, the applicant will get their side of the vacation, but the other side of the vacation?
They need to apply.
They need to apply, whereas if, if we approve it, then?
They can also apply for mine and then?
What if they don't apply for it?
Then it's fine, then no one gets it.
You know where he gets the, but it's still vacated.
Yes.
But no one pays.
We are, we are vacating just 16 by 80 foot right-of-way, which adjoins to their property, not for the other side.
Alright, so the other, the other 16 by 80 would be still city property?
Yes.
No taxes are paid on it? Alright, thank you.
Perfect. Okay, we now hear from the applicant, or their representative, who has 15 minutes. To present is your case.
I am the applicant, Brenna Maltz. You can put your phone ahead.
I've never done this before.
Um, I'm the applicant, my name is Brenna Maltz. Um, I am
State address?
Uh, 2588 Montana Street in North Bend. Um, I am proposing a full vacation with easements in place for city sewer and sanitary drains. I spoke with Ralph Dunham and Derek Wyndham, we had a site meeting, and they were the ones that advised me that I said, like, I could propose to vacate the entire city street. Um, I think that it would be beneficial for the city because if the city street's gone, the taxes go to the taxpayers who are affected directly by the property. Um, and then I've also spoke with multiple neighbors when I was in the process of doing the vacation about traffic issues and speeding along the city streets. Um, and there is also shortage of, I mean, we run out of land in the city of North Bend, so if I could get the city street vacated, I could potentially split my lot into two with the size requirements and build two homes on that property or on two different tax lots, uh, which would be beneficial to the city of North Bend for tax purposes. Um, and then just have the city water, because from my understanding, water is not through Montana. It's just sewer and, um, san- sanitary and storm drains. So I was proposing that we could take water up Pine and connect it to Connecticut. That way, I talked, when I talked with the water board, they said that there's no, they're doing a loop project right now for being able to tie water lines in, um, and not having to open up the fire hydrants and clear the stagnant water. So that could be connected through Connecticut, which is the next street south, I believe, of my property. So.
I'm trying to read this. And then, yes, I see it.
So as of right now, the water dead ends, there's a fire hydrant, um, between on the corner of Pine, which is another undeveloped city street that ties into Florida. Um, and I would have to either extend the water line through Montana or for it to loop into Connecticut, for it to be a fluent loop project. But I think the main reason that I would like the city to vacate the entire street and give me easements through there is so I could potentially have two buildable home sites, which would have two more homes within the city limits and I think be beneficial to our housing in the city of North Bend.
So is your idea then, we build two home sites, that moves out, what adds to?
Yeah, correct. So from my understanding, if the entire street was vacated, that 80-foot right-of-way would be cut into, cut in half essentially, so I would get, um, 40 feet of the right-of-way along with my neighbors to the, on Oak Street and Robert Kramer, who is another undeveloped lot next to me. So I believe the affected property owners are Jesse and, uh, Jason Bustamante, Douglas McCord, and Robert Kramer. And I spoke with them in lanes during the vacation, I needed the signatures, and they were all on board because they like being at a dead-end street and they don't want more through traffic going through it because it's just going to increase the traffic if Montana was connected up to Lincoln.
And I'm sorry, you live north or south of the one?
My address is.
Is it your airport or the local?
It's not.
North of the airport, yeah, so I have to access my property off of Lincoln, so go up to the, go up Virginia, turn on Lincoln, and then go down on Montana. Where the affected, I, there's one affected property owner that would have to access his property the same way the other two property owners would have to access, access their homes off of Lincoln. I think, believe it's 1686 Montana and 1700, or sorry, 1686 Oak Street and 1700 Oak Street. Those are the next two property owners. And they're.
First, Florida, I can't, I can't, we're on the phone, I can't find Florida.
Florida's undeveloped.
Yeah, almost all of Florida.
Yeah. Yep.
It's on a tax plot mask, but it doesn't show it.
Do you know what the estimated size of the two lots you'd be building?
So my lot right now is point two acres, so if I added 40 feet, I think they'd roughly be 5,000 or, or 5,000 square feet, maybe 15 or 5,500 square feet each if I subdivided them in half with the city street vacated.
And currently, your address 2588, that's undeveloped.
Yeah, it's undeveloped. I just logged the, I just logged the property earlier this spring and I'm working on doing brush removal and removing the stumps from the property. But I'm kind of in a standstill because there is an elevation difference. There's probably a 20-foot elevation difference between the bottom of Montana and the top of my property. So I was thinking that if I could get the street vacated, I could push some of the material that's already in the city right-of-way further in to help develop and flatten my lot to be more developable, more developable.
Okay, but there's storm sewer and sanders who are running.
Through Montana.
Through Montana.
Yes. So I was proposing that, I believe in the report that Pollack sent me, is that the easements or the sewer sanitary lines are very close to, if the full vacation were to occur, it would be very close to the property line. I'm not 100% sure what your setback requirements are for easements, but I believe when I was reading through, um, your building codes, that in order to build a home, I have to be 20 feet from the front of the property line in order to put a structure. So I don't know what your setbacks would be for easements, but if it was 20 feet or less, then I would be within the setback requirements to build and be away from the easements in place.
And you're proposing to, um, um, from Lincoln down Montana and access?
Yep. Yeah, from Lincoln to Montana, that's how I access it now, the pavement dead ends at my property. And there's a sewer manhole right at the kind of corner of my property, it's a little bit lower. And there's a fire hydrant where I would access water from.
So I guess I'm still a little unsure, are you proposing to vacate the entire, wait, on Canada?
Yes, I would like to propose to vacate the entire city street from the section, that section, and then that 80-foot right-of-way, from my understanding, 40 feet would go to me, 40 feet would go to the neighbors on the other side, which would be Robert Kramer and Douglas McCord.
So you're looking for, for half. Okay, um, but there's several facilities to have to.
Right.
And storm.
Yep.
Oh, do you know where those are?
Can I add something? I think they are at the center, I was talking to the Public Works Director and the Building Department. So I got their staff recommendation and the partial vacation was recommended by the Public Works Director, you can find that in the staff report. Uh, also, uh, we have a continuous Montana Street, only this portion is unimproved. So we would be blocking the access, as you say, right now, you don't have access to your lot. If we vacate the whole part, we would be blocking the whole connection, so then we won't have these two west connection. That was a suggestion that we had. And Public Works Director, if you want, I can read his comment. And Building Department has clearly said whatever Public Works Director has said, they go together. So now, that's on.
Where is, is that from Ralph Dunham, or is that from?
Ralph.
Where's that at? So I have the world's worst version of this. It's what I've been trying to reference for all this.
Okay, if you for the item 31, case number, it is on the third page of staff report. So you can find comments. For this comments, agency comments, where you can find Public Works Department, if you want, I can read that, so everyone can.
Yeah, that'll help me, so I should I think more?
So, agency comments, Public Works Department, by partial vacation of the right-of-way would be acceptable. I do not recommend full vacation of the Montana Street right-of-way between Oak and Pine. The following are my reasons. A partial street improvement exists, approximately 85 feet of unimproved street, providing access to garage for both 1686 Oak and 1700 Oak. Storm drainage and sanitary sewer exist within the right-of-way. So if, if we get full vacation approved, we would require easement for that. And currently, we don't have any water system, but we should be connected through, if, if your properties will get developed, we will need the water connection. Then general traffic circulation and emergency access to the properties to the to the north and south, so of Pine Street, at the minimum, will require development and adjoining vacant properties are developed. And currently, gray issues exist to connect to Montana. And it is the easiest way of recovering. Existing pipes appear to be 18 feet apart and at the depth of, depth of five to seven feet. This would require a minimum 15 feet wide easement. So answering to your question, it would be 15 feet wide easement. So when 33 feet minimum of right-of-way, if that helps.
I have one more question, like, if somebody can answer me. Yeah, yeah, I just, I'm reading them the whole back. Okay. So when your original uh, application, did you ask, I didn't find it on there. Did you ask for a partial, did you ask?
A full vacation.
Yeah, cool.
Yeah.
I just, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Alright. Would it be possible for you to just end up this page with the recommendation? I have, I know, I know.
Oh, you have it?
Yeah, okay, yeah. I was, I have, I have, okay.
And just above that, you can have the utilities map, I have attached a map where you can see the two lines going from the center of the street.
So. That's a bit. You can. I just, I have my case, sorry.
I can have it printed for you, but I'm pretty soon.
This is not a problem, I just, I've got a lot of time to follow that.
So again, um, just trying to to put all this together, you're proposing this so that where, on the ground here, you could split it into two new lots?
Yes, yep.
So the partial vacation would allow you to add?
16 feet.
16 feet on existing lots, but not to create?
No, I don't think that it would, because I believe it's, you have to have a lot of 3,500 square feet or more to build a home on it in the city of North Bend. Or for one buildable tax lot, it has to be 3,500 square feet or larger.
It will, it's just more than 16 feet.
Yeah, so if I was to get a partial vacation, I wouldn't be, I don't think I would have the square footage to be able to build a home on. I don't, I would only be able to develop the lot as is, essentially, I wouldn't be able to put two homes there.
Well, is there any guidance regarding setbacks for utilities?
So, we would require 15 feet wide easement, so I don't think you can build on that easement. And I'm not sure after, if, if I need to check with Ralph to see that, if he needs to have the setback from the easement or from the property.
From the property line?
Yeah.
Good.
Because on, on the full map here, it showed that the utilities went very near to your property.
Yeah, I believe it's 33 feet off of my property line.
It is 15 feet from the center line.
Which?
On my side, yeah.
On the other side.
That's the center line, right?
So is it a let's say, if I'm mistaken, we were to approve her easement or vacation in entirety, you can put a stipulation, they're saying she's responsible for uh, getting utilities moved to city, working with the city to give the, at her expense, I think, that's, that, is that a I mean, I, I don't, I'm just curious what the, this utilities are there underground, and somebody has to be responsible for paying for it. It wouldn't be the city, because they're not.
So we would require the easement to walk or do anything there, but it would be city.
If you like.
It would be city responsible?
City responsible for?
For walking and doing everything on the easement.
But if, but like for, let's say, but the moving of the utilities, putting the sewer lines like to adjacent property, that would be on par with it.
Getting the sewer connection to my property is.
Yeah, that would be.
Yeah, but the maintenance within your.
Because that, that is the main line, so maintenance of the main line on the Montana Street, the city's responsible, uh, responsibility, but if we are connecting it to her property, that would.
It would be my cost to have my main line connected to my property from.
So there's not a main line going through on Montana, but there is a main, there, so there is a main line on Montana. So, but what I'm saying is that, let's say, she had to move it or we'd have, it would have to, you can't build on top of it.
Yeah, so that's why we require the easement.
Right, yeah.
So no one is moving it. It's just for, she can't build anything on that, and we have a easement where if we require any maintenance, the city, they can go in her property and do the maintenance, so, so that would be easement.
But she can't legally build on top.
No, she can't.
So if she, her house, wherever the house was situated, could not be on top of the sewer line or water line or electrical line, with any utility.
Yeah, I would have to have a setback, that I could only build so far away from, just like, I believe it's 20 feet, that I have to build off of the property line, just with, from the front of the property line, I have, my setbacks are 20 feet. So whatever the easement would be and your setbacks for the easement would be, I'd have to maintain that in order to build a home, that way you guys still have access to the main line itself.
So if I put it into simple words, we would require 20 feet easement and we are, other side is we are proposing 16 feet partial vacation, so kind of, it is same, it is just that we won't get that. We are not doing easement, we are maintaining the connection and having the, to, going east to west.
There's one.
Okay, additional questions, Brandon? We'll now hear from any other person, thank you, Randy. Now, now here from any other person who support the application.
Hi. Name's Ian Washington, I live at 2450 Montana, um, just down the. Name's Ian Washington, I live at twenty-four fifty Montana, um just down the street from the intersection of Montana and Oak. Um my question I had earlier was how close to the edge of the property? Was the sewer drain that was, or the, sorry, the mantle or the sewer access point? That was the issue with the planning, like how far from the property was it, because it's. Our biggest concern with everybody else in the neighborhood is we do not want Montana to go through. Uh and that's our main concern also is. We don't want excessive traffic running through that neighborhood, there's tons of small kids that run through there. And play in the street and are running around and there's already an issue. And that would actually just increase the issue, because just one street over, I've almost gotten smacked. A couple times with people just not even stopping at stop signs. And it's a problem in there, um and that would just be another stop sign for them to blow through. And I've had guys that I've caught on my camera on my house going at least fifty. And I'm only one block or one house down from the stop sign, if they haven't turned onto Montana. And they were already accelerated that fast going down past my house. So I really don't want that developed as a through street.
Is this, uh, what kind of question? Yes. Does this, your interpretation of this project, this will have new street through, or is it just going to be houses?
My concern is that if she doesn't get the vacation, that down the road. A street will go through.
And that's why you're for it.
And that is, I'm hundred percent for it, yes, because she wants to make sure that a street does not go through there.
Can I add something? So just not to her property, we have a parcel which is underdeveloped. And if you say you don't want access to Montana completely. We are also blocking access to like Florida course, which is underdeveloped, we are also blocking access to Florida. And not to her property, we have a parcel which is underdeveloped. And we have it, I guess, I'm not sure who's owner, but we haven't got consent from them, I guess. In future, if we are trying to develop anything here on the north. We had well gave the vacation.
Which is awesome. But also, uh Florida, because of the topography of that area. There's zero way Florida could ever be developed without cutting out massive chunks of the surrounding area. Yeah, the, the, the topography of that area makes Florida completely undevelopable in between those streets. That's probably why it hasn't been. I've actually been looking at um vacating my portion on the backside of my property to Florida.
My concern is that we can vacate it by this, it is my perspective that we should not block a connection.
No.
Because it is currently, we feel it is underdeveloped, what was the reason? Because it, it's the street, there was no running streets without, that is the main reason, it's two towns are underdeveloped.
And the, the, the heights difference between the two different lands, like. Where Oak sits and where Pine sits is almost a twenty to thirty foot difference. And that's not just from west to east, that's also from north to south.
So it's just my suggestion, I'm not, because I am not.
I was surprised when I saw the trees come down, when you guys logged it, because I was like, no way somebody's gonna be able to develop that piece of property.
All one materials within this group right away, that's a twenty foot difference from the right way to my property where they quote unquote developed.
So, so sorry.
Right, I got you, sorry, making it more of a conversation than it should be to me.
Okay, so we, we heard your support.
That's it.
I think, thank you. You're now here for anyone in opposition to the application. Very none, all now here for anyone who's neutral to the end. Very none. Are there any written comments? Now is the time for rebuttal for me, if you would like to say anything, in addition. Her must been presented since you left. And you only become up to. And sorry, it's, it's for the recording.
Oh, that's okay. I, just in conjunction with what Ian said, is that even for Montana and Florida, Florida is such. There's such a height difference, I mean, it has to be at least thirty feet between Oak and. There's a fellow that has his driveway carved out in the Florida right away and he's using it as his driveway. And even if the sewer, it would block a sewer connection, I just don't think it would be plausible to even be able to develop that without having. Major issues to surrounding properties and retaining walls in place and. Everything else that goes into development just because of the restrictions of the land that's currently there.
Hey, so now I'm confused again. You're saying that it would be nearly impossible to develop that, yet you want to part of how two lots to develop.
Florida, Pollock was concerned about if we did, if we vacated Montana, that we would be blocking access to Florida. Street, which is the next street north, which I'm saying is Florida is pretty much. I wouldn't say impossible, but would be extremely difficult to develop, so I don't think that if I was to vacate my. The streets, if the vacation was to go through on Montana, I really don't think it would have any effect on Florida, given its current. Restrictions on development opportunity. And I spoke with Ralph about it as well, and he said that it would be very, very, very hard to develop that street. No matter if Montana was vacated or there was a sewer connection or a sanitary or storm. Blocked off from Florida.
Questions, Brandon? Last word, before you go.
That's all I've got.
All right, Monoplos is Tumble Karen and the record Pat, seven thirty-eight P M. Now is time for commission deliberation. Thoughts? I used to talk about vacating a piece of. Jared Roroz initial to go through, nothing's undone of it, and that's why I have nobody who, or just vacating that. A full vacation or a partial, oh. I mean, between Connecticut or Pine Street should go through and that one's completely. That could go through one day too, so. I always see trees going up to that one as well. All that, yeah. Looks like if you go all the way between Virginia and all the way up to Colorado Avenue, it's the D H S. It actually almost cluttered it does. You can see in the trees where they had. This is a satellite photo, the West Plumbers brought these, getting there too. Or is it, uh, is closer to Virginia? Corner of Lincoln and Virginia. Oh, oh, that, oh, they're built, I see. That's my status. I don't have status, I don't really, uh, I, I'm Mister, let's develop things and provide tax revenue for this one. I, I also, you know, I can see the future. Not having access to that, I mean, that's always the way, but people are always spending up. You know, retaining walls, you have to go next to that property. But, um, but it's twenty-six fourteen, but somebody really wanted you through the, they could through the. Well, my concern is only for the utilities, my concern is only for the utilities. So a partial vacation would allow for utilities to. And I'm unsure if there's enough room to leave utilities in place and do with. That's, that's what I'm not sure.
Have a good question.
And Chance? Well, it's like, that's kind of my, you know, my question about the utilities would end up, if they have people who can all that, that was like here about as long.
Yes.
So, but then I also understand this is also doing the vacate of partial vacation, I'll give that some purposes. But the only question posed to us is, do we approve my vacation? Whole age and anything beyond that is up to, yeah, that's why I'm not gonna go any further than that. So you're saying it's a, and our question is would we approve vacation whether it's full or partial? No, not, not just that, but what she does with the property after that is up to her. Even if it's a little or a partial. She still need to being easy. Yes, I have no bearing on utilities. I mean, yeah, that's, I was pretty middle of her topic. So you're saying if we approve it, ask the client. We are, we didn't, as Paulick did say, no, partial. The city's asking for a partial, for the party. I didn't hear that part of it. The, the city's asking for, is recommending a partial with. On either side.
Forty-eight feet corridor and sixteen feet variation, so they get sixteen five gain.
Would. If we do a partial. Anyway, sixteen feet on the side, would the city still be able to build the street to?
Yes, so minimum be required is forty-eight.
Anybody else? So Ralph says a partial. You know, he looked into it, so he came about, but he said, with all this, about the. Which would still allow the street to go through if, and would not allow to. Develop two lots. That would accomplish the same thing. Essentially, we just add a little bit more property to the lots or. Still allow the street to go through. So I, I thought you guys had your deliberation and. This is one of the hardest ones we ever done, that's why I work just.
So I got, I have two cents to put in.
And take that with. That's the whole thing. So that would be, I like to be is. Right, right condition by the city, for maintaining the easement. With the sixteen feet, right, you know. It was made, made a. So I'm entertaining a motion. If the. I'm, I'm still the promotion from somebody, that. So we're gonna read. That would be, yeah. Second motion to approve application, the case file number sixteen seven. F two five, F zero 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 one three, P L N G. Based on information presented by the applicant and responses confining to the staff report in proposed final order. Subject to the following conditions or approval set forth in the proposed final order. Case file number six two seven, two five, zero zero, zero zero, one three, P L N G. Okay, I have motion, do I have second? So now I'm confused again. Oh, look, is this. To approve the application as presented or to approve the application as recommended by the city?
As recommended in the staff report.
As recommended, second, that's. There is, okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor? All right, I oppose. So we're prevented. That is difficult.
Doesn't that mean there's no full vacation?
Well, we, we just think recommendation would say castle, if you go down, deal it to the city house.
Yes, you can feel it.
Based on the recommendation by. The public works director.
Which is Ralph. I guess, can I have a, can you ask questions or no, are we done?
We're done, yeah. Once I be great in, in close, in close news, and then you're free to ask question.
Okay.
So that, um, I close the. Finally, we need to. However, seventeen twenty-five.
I guess, I'm just trying to wrap my head around it, so basically the difference between the full, full vacation and the partial vacation is. She still would have allowed easements to you. But the difference is you still can develop the road later on.
Yes.
Where before you couldn't, with the full vacation, if you would have given her full vacation, you wouldn't have been able to develop the road later on.
Correct, sure.
Okay.
So partial vacation was for the ease, for the maintaining utilities and to building the connection, so that we can build a road there.
For partial, but you would have been able to do that regardless with an easement.
No, in the easement, we can't build a road.
Okay.
We are giving the whole property to her.
Okay.
And then we'll just have the easement to maintain the utilities, but we can't build the road there.
Gotcha, okay.
Which is what everybody wants. Literally, everybody in the neighborhood.
Want, not everybody, the neighbors.
Oh, everybody in the neighborhood.
Correct, yes.
Wants the full ease, the full vacation with. Her supplying the easement, so you guys can still do whatever you want to do with utilities, but no road goes through them, that was a whole pull goal.
Yeah, we, we understand that, we understand.
Right.
You have ten days, you can make a be into city council, anyways, this case has to go to city council for the final decision. So the government, the final, the decision made by the planning commission is a recommendation to the city council. So I'll get to you for the city.
Yeah, they don't have to take our recommendation, they do what they want to. They take our recommendation.
And sometimes you don't.
Yes, sometimes you don't.
You got your chance, if you wanna still.